We wish you well and we urge strength and prayers as you continue to...
Thank you, John. I thank you for giving us this platform because many times our stories have been stifled and no one wants to take ours. Who has brought this to the attention of the world? I think by its intervention, Nigeria is discussing this issue and the world is getting to discuss this issue. Thank you very much.
The President of the United States is on your side and that certainly helps. Thank you.
President Trump says the persecution and killing of Christians in Nigeria...
Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of Dissou, called Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case. Even till now, we are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than me. They say I insult them. I insult them because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there. Go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy. It's not me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of Dissou, called Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case. Even till now, we are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than me. They say I insult them. I insult them because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there. Go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy. It's not me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of Dissou, called Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case. Even till now, we are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than me. They say I insult them. I insult them because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there. Go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy. It's not me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Did I commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of Dissou, called Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case. Even till now, we are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than me. They say I insult them. I insult them because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for the establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions of the Constitution of the Republic of Nigeria. It is very clear and straightforward. He's there. Go and check it yourself. And you're asking me to be happy. It's not me to be upset that I was arrested. Did I commit any crime? Commit any crime? The answer is no. I committed no crime. I am fighting for the freedom of my people as contained in the Constitution of Dissou, called Nigeria. I did no wrong. That was why after two years they could not prove any case. Even till now, we are still in court, they cannot prove any case. And people talk as if they are so moronic that an animal is better than me. They say I insult them. I insult them because you can't reason properly. I did nothing wrong. Calling for establishment or should I say the restoration of Biafra is within provisions...
Hail me, we shall protect, our hearts from all our faults. For in the Christ is that for all we hold dear. Then let us die without a shred of fear. Hail me, our consecrated nation. Oh Fatherland, this be our solemn pledge. Defending thee shall be our dedication. Spilling our blood will count our free will. The wedding's bannet, the rich and poor in the green Shall always be a part of liberty. We shall emerge triumphant from this ordeal. And through the crucible, unscathed the past. When we avoid the wounds of battle to heal. We shall remember the those who guide the mass. Then shall our children feel the glorious song. Of thee to read, with God almighty. Oh God, protect us from the ill before. Guide all our movements lest we go astray. Give us strength to hear the human is call. To give and not to come the cross each day. Let those who rule to suffer with resolution. To make this kind a land of righteousness.
Land of the rising sun. With the English throne and his, oh hail me of fraud. God bless me of fraud. In him we trust, shout it, sing it. Oh, hail me of fraud. God bless me of fraud. We have emerged triumphant from all our faults. Through the sufferings fade, we exalt victorious. Say it, sing it. Oh hail me of fraud. We shall always remember all that perished. In the struggle for freedom, all hail our heroes. Our prayers shall be good, good day and night. Save them always, oh hail me of fraud. All hail me of fraud. Now our star shines everywhere. We crave humility. God guide and protect us all. All hail your wisdom. Shielding us from glory. Unleashed by our own light and mind. Be our fraud, fraud, fraud shining forever.
As long as we come on air every evening, the whole world must listen. As long as we preach this very gospel, Chukwoku Kika Abiamah must be with us. We must proceed to offer every prayer to Chukwu Okike Abiamah who decided in heaven. Therefore, as we always commence, not from today but from all of old. Our Father who art in heaven, nanyinkebe ne ligwe, kahagedin song. That your name may be hallowed by men, that we may bow at the mention of it. That we may offer every glory unto thee. That we may offer you every adult none like thee. You fight our battles for us. Every blessed day you demonstrate through your kindness and your everlasting mercy. That you are our Lord, our God and our Creator. This evening we offer these your children unto thee. All over this very planet that you created, they are listening. Across the entire 24 time zones on this very planet, we are the inhabit. They are listening to your gospel this very evening. A gospel of redemption, a gospel of hope, a gospel of restoration, a gospel of renewal. This very gospel of freedom, this very gospel of emancipation as only you ordained. Onyepurimihe nini, that this very gospel must be preached. That mankind may be set free from the eternal damnation of the creation of the British. My goodness me, I want to remain in the spirit because we must worship heaven. We answer your name, oh Lord of hosts. Everything about us is designed to offer glory unto thee. We have atoned for our sins last year. This very year we have not only atoned for our sins. We have spilled, we have shed blood, they have shed our blood. We have let our sacrifice be made unto thee. Even on the 30th of August, as we are being felled by the bullets of the enemy, by the whalers of iniquity and of darkness, we remain very strong today to beckon upon thee. To ask you for your mercy and for your grace, to ensure that your kingdom is restored upon the face of the earth. That you can bring your healing hand to bear upon the life of those of them that you created. For one singular purpose and that purpose alone, which is to worship you in truth and in every honesty. Is there any way that we have heard? Is there any way that our ancestors may have seen? We confess before a congregation of the whole of humanity to ask you, oh Lord of hosts, to have mercy upon us. Bikombe nanyebolatineke nani ligwe, you must have mercy upon us. We have suffered enough. We have been subjugated enough. We have been tortured enough. We have been imprisoned enough. We did not do these people anything. Our crime is to answer your name. Our only crime is to be born your children. Our only crime is to excel at everything that we place our hands into. Our only crime is to exhibit your glory and your blessing, which manifestedly is upon our lives every blessed day. That is why they want to kill us. That is why the British want to join those of them who don't know you. To destroy your creation and your inheritance. You will not allow shame to befall your name. You will not allow the enemies to triumph over the lives of your children. Because you created us to exist, to worship, to honor and to praise you. That is exactly what we are going to do when this Biafra comes. It will come in truth and in every honesty. Because we remain every blessed day, Chukwabiamah, believe go whiter than white and whiter than snow. Ohozanyi si mbehe yuchineke, is there any way that we have sinned that you cannot forgive us? Our trespasses to enable us to fulfill your own word which was spoken thousands of years ago. That instead of what you promised not to come to pass, that heaven and earth wishes to exist. You opened your mouth, Chukwoku Kika Abiamah, to bless mankind to the coming of Yahweh Ishua. Who came here and said, "Let your kingdom come on earth as it is in heaven." Those words can never be in vain because they are anchored upon your holiness and your magnificence. That is why in the end we know that Biafra will come. That these children that we have given birth to all over the world. And their children, and their children, and their children. As long as they give birth to them and they are Biafrans, Chukwoku Kika Abiamah, hagefe rofefe. They will worship you in truth and honesty. Through this very work we are doing, mankind will come to understand you. Let your miracle be wrought in our lives. Let us witness and behold your magnificence, your holiness, your mystery and your grace. Under our command, oh Lord of hosts, we call upon you. We call upon you to heal. We call upon you to provide succor to those of them who are inconsolable. We ask you to come and strengthen those who are weak. We ask you to restore hope where there is hopelessness. We ask you for inclusion where there is destitution. We ask you for one brotherhood, one camaraderie, one bone, one blood and one flesh of your children. The Ephex and the Bibios, the Isan, the Shakiri, the Isobos and also those of them from Isoko. We are traveling all the way to the lands of Igala. We are moving on from there to Idoma, to Ige, to the territories of the Ibo land. All these places we dedicate unto thee. All these lands of yours, we ask you to cover it with your mercy. Because Biafra will come and when it does, Chukwoku Kika Abiamani, hagefe rofefe noso pulite. We will dance on the streets, I'm telling you. By the time that we are done, humanity will think that we are mad. We are drunk in your glory and rightfully so. Because your kingdom will come to rest upon this very earth. That very kingdom is the unadulterated, non-negotiable sovereignty of the Republic of Biafra. That your will may be fulfilled in our time. All these we pray, all these we ask for. In no other name apart from that name that belongs to you. Ahadensosinebe yebe, wonnebe yebe. Isen. 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 My name is Namdekanu. I am the leader of indigenous people of Biafra all over this very planet, I tell you. Ruwe ebedine owasotu, bana bosu ziomachineke. I lead indigenous people of Biafra, Ibuobi. So also do I.
Okay. The next on our agenda is the opening prayer, opening prayer. Opening prayer, yes, we've done it. The welcome address by Honorable Utta. Honorable Utta, please, you have the mic.
Thank you very much. Can you confirm you can hear from me?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just that first. The acting prime minister of the Biafa Republic government in exile, Honorable Oguchukun Kure, our wonderful and spectacular Minister of Information, Honorable Sonat Blawa, fellow citizens of Biafra, generalists listening and esteemed guests. We gather here today again to reaffirm our commitments to the cause of Biafra restoration and recognition. Recent events have shown us that our struggle is not just about independence but about the survival of our people, the gelling of our leaders and the designation of Nigeria as a country of particular concern are stark reminders of the challenges we face. The repression of Igbo's Biafra in Nigeria is a painful reality that we cannot ignore. However, we see a glimmer of hope. The interest shown by Donald J. Trump, the United States of America presidents and the US Congress on the persecution of Christians in Nigeria had brought out our struggle to the global stage. This is a testament to the power of our collective efforts and the lobbying prowess of Adia Elias and his team, Moran Global. Permit me to use this opportunity to express gratitude to the acting prime minister, Honorable Oguchukun Kure, for his resilience despite the distractions from people that only speak about Biafra because of the financial benefits to them. The more they try to bring him down, the more he showed them results. They accuse him of doing photoshopping and he took Biafrans to the Congress house. They said he's carrying back like Jehovah's Witness. Without knowing that the bag is full of wisdom and knowledge, he became the first Biafran and freedom fighter to ever testify against the zoo in the Congress. What a historic feat that will ever remain in the annals. We must remember that our struggle is not just about court cases or political maneuvers, is about the resilience of our people, the bravery of our men and the sacrifices of our women and children. It is said that the position of freedom fighters is either in the grave, in the prison or exile. But I stand tall to tell you that in addition to that, being invisible before your enemies and being in the midst of their enemies without them seeing you is also can be categorized as a position of a freedom fighter. So all of us here fighting from the homeland are also great freedom fighters. So when you are sitting at home in obedience to the government of Brigi, seeing fighter just covering around the environment and seeing the truckloads of military hardware in your community, it is a reminder that you are also a great freedom fighter. You are fighting the same way with those in exile, doing your part to ensure that Biafra is restored, the promised kingdom that must be restored. As we move forward, let us remain united and focus on our goal. We will continue to raise our voices. We will continue to advocate for the rights of our people and we will continue to seek for justice in the face of oppression. Let us remember that our actions have consequences and will not be deterred in bringing to book those that are sabotaging our efforts. When you hear the saying in our local parlance that Ibenwareze, don't be mistaken. It does not mean Igbo's do not have a king. It entails that in that sense of a leader, someone would take up a leadership position and give directions when it mattered most. In that sense of Mazinamdekanu, Simon Epa took the lead, ensuring the legacies of Mazinamdekanu leads on on to effect people that Mazinamdekanu surrounded himself with. Ignorantly led a campaign against Simon, thinking that doing Mazinamdekanu good. Today, the chicken has come to roach. They led a shameful act and regretting why they did so. We are now the last lap of the race and the APM is handling the battle, battling very well. He had delivered the masterstroke that landed the zoo to coma. The upper court was unprecedented. What a socket soccer punch he has given to them. I want to use this opportunity to put the word on notice, especially the leader of the free world, that the terrorists are on the rampage now kidnapping the hundreds. This time around not for ransom purposes alone but to get enough manpower should the US decide to embark on airstrike against them. We therefore call on the leader of the free world, Donald Trump, to consider having boots on the ground of Biafra. Biafra, the fact though, is government is ready to provide a base and work with the US soldiers to nip this terrorism in the boat so that peace can return again and for women and children to carry on with their lives without fear of being murdered, being kidnapped or raped by these murderous marudas. My fellow citizens, it is Biafra o'clock. We are getting closer to our final destination. Everything happening today is part of a divine arrangements and nothing can stop Biafra. I say nothing can stop Biafra. We have never been this close. They may try to break our spirit by creating fear, uncertainty and doubts, manipulating emotions to make you feel discouraged enough to give up. You cannot be broken unless you surrender. I call on you to stand courageous and focused, stand firm, be immovable as our sacrifices will not be in vain, we surely march victorious. God bless our leaders, Mazinamdekanu. God bless the prime minister, Maazie Simon Epa. God bless the acting prime minister, Mazie Oguchukun Kure. God bless Bigi. God bless Biafra in general. Tefon. 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 Thank you.
Tefon, thank you.
Well done, well done, well done, well done Isaac.
Thank you, thank you Amazi, you're welcome.
Mazazi, thank you so much. The next thing on our agenda is a brief historical background of a central region. By my humble self, Onyese. A brief historical background of the central region of Biafa Republic. On this day, the first ever town hall meeting with our acting prime minister, Honorable Oguchukun Kure. This day, the 23rd November 2025. Just as every great builder has a great plan for his great buildings. Our leader Mazinamdekanu, during his broadcasting and preaching, led a very great formidable foundation upon which we are building to. Nigerian government had thought igniting and convicting him would stop the movement, not knowing that his wall has become a solid foundation that was laid on a solid rock. And I want to remind you that breathing is that rock which can never be moved. In one of his finest moments, or should I say one of his finest broadcasts, he preached and he said, "We are going to form a government and the way and manner it is going to be will not be reviewed if not the sabotage, if not the sabotage will go and block it." And today, the government has been formed. We are very grateful to our to our Obatobi, the prime minister of the Biafa people. In another development, he also spoke about this Biafra Confederation, where he outlined emphatically the five blocks of the Confederation, namely, the northern region, the southern region, the central region, the eastern region and the western region. Every other region. This central region comprises of eight states, namely, Odmegu State, Ikemba State, Owere State, Okibwe State, Alanso State, Ikumisia State and the Bube State, which is the capital territory of the Republic of Biafra. Today, those spooking word of Mazinamdekanu has become a reality as I welcome you all to this first ever central regional meeting of the Republic of Biafra. This has equally accomplished the word of Obatobi, our prime minister Mazie Simon Epa, who said, "We are going to make the kidnapping of our leader Mazinamdekanu to become useless in the hand of the zoo government because they thought igniting him would stop the movement." Today, we have our forty states with capitals well structured with responsible and skilled administrators and cabinet members who are doing diligently well in their various states. Biafra is here. I thank you, our acting prime minister, for your for your diplomatic and political engagement in Washington DC and beyond. Mazinamdekanu said, "Go and get me Biafra. I am dead already. It's only Biafra that will resurrect me or bring me to life." If you have not been supporting Brigi and you say you love Mazinamdekanu, start now to support Brigi. Support for a in this state. This bring Mazinamdekanu life. This is the only thing that will free him, that will give him the joy and the fulfillment. Thank you and God bless you all.
Thank you, thank you Onyese, well done, thank you.
Thank you Onyese.
The next thing on our agenda is by Mwamak. By Mwamak, sorry.
De wonyese.
Mwamak, are you ready sir?
Yeah, I did not, yeah, I'm here. The mother shall go. Eh, 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 tupu maga niruega ebawa sejya. Ibondechi. Atomi boyabo oluk. Elulena akamo. Eluna alalena akamo. Akamo de kwa ocha. Elulena akamo. Eluna alalena akamo. Akanyi de kwa ocha. Asiojya nega no beke. Ayma suja abeke. Neyoji ibo ifangi bia. Neelelegono dimji noga ebawu ifemi ya bia ba e camera. Neehebemni meya. Aimoto toje. Aimwa kari ilu. Aimwa fufa makanda mu adane. Yamaa inkoku abasi diyelu. Abia bonanya oji. Chukwokikapiamah. Okekeke oké, ke mwa me. Ike edu, gi kala. Abasi diyelu, biya bonanya oji. Elu biya bonoji. Ale, biya bonanya oji. Ndechi no no biya bonanya oji. Atichyo hafya udu meze biya bonanya oji. Machoke and chokon biya bonanya oji. Ogi bu pa bereba. Gekua wa, gekua wa ajiu ku. Onu biya bonoji. Uto tuze ma. Biya bonanya oji. Abasi utu tu. Ofu utu tu. Oji hechua wa bia. Onu mo wehechua, onu biya bonoji ta. Ebri oku moku. Ebri biya bonanya oji. Nyero of iswi isochi. No biya bonoji ta. Ogo anggo anggo fumpuro. Onu biya bonanya oji. Amadi oha biya bonoji. Oge uchi inketiti. No biya bonoji ta. Ifijoka ndoka, onu biya bonoji ta. Oge uchi kadili. Chin kazwi bohli. Udu ma min. Oge uchi kenami, biya bonoji ta. Ekandori ya saga. Onu biya bonoji ta. Iguzuma kikbejeje. Iguzuma keku akoto. Iguzuma kezyoku. Biya bonanya oji. Kukuku ma ya burubé. Ogi bu puma yibeko. Onu biya bonoji ta. Eke biya bonoji. Odiye biya bonoji. Afo biya bonanya oji. Mpo onu biya bonoji ta. Asio nyegue soji, guesando. Ibinamokba be yasi, yani ali fe wantay gurendo kuwa rogo. Ainariyoh onu biya gurendo kuwa nogo. Ofo. Anjo fo, anjo go. Ebere, ugo bere. In case be ebeto kuhan kujaya. Kujaha ya hopajaya. Hopajiha yife tu ye ono. Mofuto kuwa foma owaya, owayo wasa. Biya fula yebi. Adigenda izachupa adewo jano chiado. Adigenda achupa ne adiyanya no chiadiyanyi. Anya achugo yero ba. Osa. Anya achugo nupé. Anya achugo gala. Adigenda achupa adewo. Anya achugo di TV. Ainakuha adiyanyi. One abiaru ayen pogo pogo. Ofo. Jindewa. Alao bambe so. Jindewa. Otamini owele. Jindewa. Oketa anku ebekuku. Jindewa. Nwore wode. Jindewa. Mininja baje jindewa. Anjo nishiani. Our APM, the finisher. Onye iponye mezoo. Anjiya neyaba gaka. Anjin duya, neyaba gaka. Anjin duze nolu ya, neyaba gaka. Andjin domoreme ya, neyabagaaka. Andjin dooro ya, neyabagaaka. Mo ono gozo buchea ya. Ono ga moto buchea ya. Ono go re buchea ya. Buchea nyu furo yo jo. Buchea ya ma do jo. Buchea ya mogo jo. I ne bere, onye shi ochi ha anye. We gue butu zo, di to tri po jana ra. Ne gue de Jana Ra Ross. Uno ndes, ndes school of, ndes school, ndes school of score. Bagani ke, mena inje manyala bulu anyara. I am gue de one ye bono akka. I am na si uno buchea ya wo. Ne gurumu Biafra dumnon, buruburu ebé dumonwavu, ne ye bono akka. Nda ke mogaga go ebia, ife bashia imono wa nchuka. Amadi oha, abasi diyelu, chukoki ke. Gue la goya ye pa woobi. Gue dono no, kuwa ye pa woobi. Abawafunye legifau memenyaa, eweli ekidige bleli, ekidike. Ekidige blidi kalaga mon. Mo yango kobi, awa Biafra do osa wa embaga. Awa Biafra do ife wa nchuka. Me pora ma du dum akwaya, opoku opo sani, ifa jidi kono bua opoku. Niya no opoku beke, me pora no so. He said, he said.
He said.
He said.
He said.
He said.
One queen.
Deu.
One queen.
He said.
Eh, lagga, emura di jide. Ona onu du e oji. Ayaya bono akoji ya. Amakbo Onyese, onyo kukota ine bo. Abia bono oji, Onyese beko bono. Akoi ine bia, deu. Okay, thank you, my fellow minister for the correction. Thank you, deu. Deu.